We'll get started with our city council meeting. City of Gilbert, city council meeting, Tuesday, November twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty-three, at six ten P. M. Roll call, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilor Pontenin?
Here.
Councilor Heitzman?
Here.
Mayor Smith?
Here.
Councilor Polis?
Here.
Councilor Skinsitch?
Here.
Also in attendance is city attorney, chief of police, city engineer, operations director, director, and clerk.
Thank you. We do have a quorum. If you'd all please stand and join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And we have one addition to approve.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. If we can under new business add on the wastewater treatment plant change order twenty-five and payment request, number forty-four to Magni Construction for ten thousand one hundred twenty-eight dollars and ten cents.
I'll move.
Last part, did you see it?
Yeah.
Moved by Councilor Polis, supported by Councilor Heitzman. Any further discussion?
Is that in our packet?
It is not.
It's just many, many pages. So I didn't do a lot of office.
Oh, I see. Okay.
This is a Magni change order, is that right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Any further discussion? You want a second, Bob?
No second.
Do you want a second to look it over?
Oh, no, I mean, you know, this is later on. I'll have a chance to read it throughout the meeting.
Yeah. Okay. No further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose, say nay. Non-motion carries five zero. Under the consent agenda, the city council minutes.
Move. Part.
Moved by Councilor Polis, supported by Councilor Heitzman. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose, say nay. Non-motion carries five zero. And do we have any public input tonight? Please step forward and state your name.
My name is Dave Allen, and I'm a member of the Kromosavi Board and also the Kromosavi Foundation Board. The reason I'm here tonight is to talk about a project that we're working on, which is the Joel's Modern Stream and Stone and Gloom. Because Kromosavi is a quad city venture, I've been here before. City council meetings is kind of courtesy, just to let the cities mold what we're trying to do. Maybe this could be a good hand to hand these out. So where the, where the project is right now is I arranged an engineering program over at Kromosavi. I submitted this project to the, for the engineers to direct, and one of their partners said they did that a few years ago, like pre-COVID. So what you'll see is kind of their architectural rendering of what we came up with. For this, it's kind of similar to the base that kind of went on the head lift. So they came up with that, that kind of order to locate it. Architectural resources, which is a firm that actually designed the privilege club, was gracious enough to kind of come up with a estimate for this. So now we're in the fundraising stages. So certainly, we're going to try to take advantage of any grants available. I talked to IPR, so obviously be like tourism related. Once there's enough money raised, I think architectural resources, we would go to them and complete the design. And then once we had the building materials, this would be made all rather steel or pipe, like for the privilege group handle. And then perhaps approach some of the mining companies if we could get material additions. Another part of the project, hopefully, when I have talked to the rolling program that's at the fundraising camps across from five seasons, so some of the smaller items for the rolling program would be involved with doing some of the fab there. So again, number one, it would be just promote the world-class facility we have currently, but also put a little spotlight on the engineering program over at Kromosavi, plus the rolling program at the head of campus. And then, again, because it would be, again, the quad cities, they're going to get a display for like points of interest, for each of their cities to be out there. And, you know, we're always away from that, obviously. But this, again, this is more or less a courtesy, just to let into the cities mold what Kromosavi does. And if anybody knows of any grants available, I will admittedly say that I kind of agree to the, for the grants and doing fundraising or something like this. So my contact information is on the back. If anybody has any, like I said, the first stuff that the tourism things are available. I did get quite a list for my triple RV that I plan on, and so all this foundation, things like that. But I don't want to take anymore, and I'll take it all of it.
Oh, absolutely.
Looks cool, Dave. Good luck. I do have a question. You're espousing that it's the world's largest. Is there a current world's largest that we're trying to beat?
Yes, there is one north of Winnipeg. It's a stone. It's about fourteen feet diameter.
Wow.
And it's like a hot, hot and wet place to last. And we're going to make ours a little bit better. So our, the plan is to be, maybe it will be all steel. Maybe we'll say of course. So, but that little plan. Steel might be sixteen, eighteen. We'll see what it comes in at. Till the rock will be, maybe we'll go to sixteen, eighteen feet diameter. But there is more room than I'm aware of.
Excellent. That's awesome. Thank you.
You bet.
Very nice. Any further public input? Moving on to reports for mayor and council. Mayor, I have been advised to remind the public that the city of Gilbert is sort of hosting a Christmas decoration event this year. So we encourage residents who are decorating their house to please come down to city hall and fill out a registration. The reason for the registration is so when judges go around, we're not driving aimlessly. We have places we can look at. And judge, there is going to be, hopefully, monetary reward for first, second, and third place. That's to be determined yet. But please, if you're interested and you're setting your lights up, you think they're the best, come register. And the registration is free. Also, I want to thank Troy Corpey for donating a huge reef to the city of Gilbert, and Lee Smith for donating several Christmas lights that she collected over the years. And I hope everybody had a joyous Thanksgiving weekend. And that's all for me. Councilor Pontenin?
I don't have anything tonight. I'll have some questions of Sam later.
Thank you. Councilor Heitzman?
Just a public service message. It's space heater season, and those cheap little white extension cords that you use to plug in your Christmas LED lights, they don't work on space heaters, and please don't use them. Plug it directly into the wall. Fire hazard. That's all I got, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilor Polis?
I got a few things. One, it was great to see the benefit for Katie last Wednesday at the Hippodrome. A lot of people there, a lot of silent auction items. Looks like they went from pretty high value. So that's pretty cool to see all them people. There is people from not even around here there. So the other thing I'd like to do is send my condolences to Virginia Police Department and the officer recovering from the incident last, was it Thanksgiving Day, I think it was, that apartment fire?
Yeah.
Where he was trying to save the guy and ended up getting burned himself. So that's all I really got.
Thank you. Councilor Skinsitch?
Nothing at this time.
Thank you. And we'll move on to reports from staff and boards. Fire chief isn't here. City Attorney Lindsey?
Thank you, Mayor. No formal report, but I am happy to field a question.
Thank you.
I hadn't, forgot what it was.
Chief Teacher? Thank you. City Engineer?
Just an update on the approved plumbing construction project, Joel and Sop. They got the sanitary sewer line pretty much complete. Tomorrow, they're going to be installing the fire hydrant on the end of the line and the water service to the building. So it's pretty much being wrapped up for the year. They did, from the last council meeting, did get the patch done for the holiday entrance on Summit Street, so.
It looks great.
Weather permitted, it's worked. So that's just an update on the status of that.
Excellent. Thank you. And we don't have Wendy here. Was she there? Sue? Oh, did I?
Yeah.
Nah, he wasn't. Well, there she is. We'll get back to you, Sam. We didn't want to leave you, Elliot.
I forgot I was on mute. Nothing to report this time. I look forward to coming back in the spring, though. I'm sure I'll be busy come January with reservations and getting the deposit from the people who already made their reservations for next year. But tomorrow I got. And thank you for approving my contract. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Wendy. And we'll move back to public works operation. Sam?
I got a couple of things that, I need some ideas from council. Some of the old meters, I know we tried to sell them before. I know that's where Ty and the police officers wanted to put that workout gym is down in the Legion Room. We got a lot of our old electric meters and a lot of our old water meters in there. I know we tried selling some of those, the electric meters. I think we've sold like probably twenty to thirty of them. I don't know what the council would want to do with the rest of them. There's some that I would keep, but the majority of them can go. But I don't know if council's going to make a motion to get rid of them, or how that, how that works. Like the water meters, we could probably get, we could probably bring to like a scrapyard. You know, there's brass and some cast iron plates on them. So we could probably get some money for them. But like I say, the electrical meters, I don't know if those can go for, to a scrapyard too, or how it works. Try to get rid of them, or if there's other suggestions from council.
They're pretty obsolete, aren't they? I mean, what good would they be?
I mean, I, I've asked some of our, like our NIPo members, you know, different, it's the board we belong to for the electrical side. I asked them if anybody was interested in any meters. And everybody's going to these newer meters like we have, you know. There's no interest, so.
Could they be used like down at the campground?
They could be, but that's where I would keep some, you know. I, I mean, I think we got like nine hundred, nine hundred, some, some of them. But I might keep a hundred of them, you know, where, you know, we got, I think it's a, takes up about an eight by eight area, probably eight feet high is how, that's just the electric meters. And then the water meters are about the same, same space, you know, taken up down there. So I just assume try to get rid of most of them and keep, you know, a handful. Like I say, it's up to council. I don't know what we'd have to do on that.
You just want to keep a handful, handful of them, just in case kind of thing?
Yeah, that's, that's all. I would do is just to keep a handful of them, you know.
Yeah, I guess. My opinion is get rid of them. I don't know if it, not in the business, I guess, of collecting.
Yeah.
Old.
Yeah.
Or just keep it up to speed.
No.
And I would really not want to see the habit of just rearranging extra stuff, putting it here for a year and then over there for another two years. Yeah, just get rid of them, in my opinion.
I made rumor has it that legislature is pushing to have automated meters installed everywhere within the next few years. At least that's the rumor, so.
So would it be beneficial to even hang on to them for the campground?
It would, you know, it would. Like I say, but I'm going to only keep, you know, maybe a hundred, maybe a little less, seventy-five. If there's something comes up to where I can't get a meter, at least we can put this in the camp.
Yeah.
Or for the, you know, it, and it all depends how the campground goes to in the future for leaving and going or coming and going, how they're going to be charging, or is, are they going to come to the city and charge? That's something that's got to be worked out for, for futures, which is when are you going to charge them? And then somehow that, I mean, because the campground is almost another entity.
Right.
It's a separate unit. We charge a campground for quality usage, and whatever the campground decides.
I'll make a motion for you to get rid of them.
Before you do that, I would like the opportunity for that to be going to public bids, so that people that are interested in buying them would be given that opportunity.
I don't think so.
Did you contact the manufacturer if they take them? You know, maybe they need the bases that they could reuse or something?
No, I haven't contacted anybody on that.
Well, maybe should, because, you know, they may need the blanks, whatever. They could put their new meters in. Just a phone call.
They're all used meters, aren't they, the ones that were taken out?
Yeah.
Right, but I'm, I'm just talking the bases. They may be able to use parts out of them for, you know, right. If, you know, or they might have a place where they do get rid of them, you know, for environmental reasons or whatever. I would, I would call them and find out for sure first, before you bring any to the dump or wherever you're going to bring.
And then I like Paul's idea, if anybody wants them, do we put a bid on them, or how can we?
Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
If we're going to go that route, we have to declare them as surplus property. And basically, it would have to be in a written resolution declaring it surplus, and the city has no future of further need for that. And then we could set them up to open in the public bid.
And then that's what, what we did before is I think we put them in lots of like ten or lots of twelve. Bid on these twelve. How much you give us for twelve meters? So if they, you know, five bucks, five bucks per twelve, and, you know, or if somebody wants to bid on the whole eight hundred.
So does that become a real time drag for your staffing as far as, it's almost like you have to contract do bid to come in and do this, and is it worth it?
We did it right up at city hall. The last time I came around, I, the gym was here. We just put an ad in the paper. There was a start time, and, you know, bid, all bids have to be in by this date, this time. And we had a bid opening of this time. There was only one bid last time. So we didn't, we didn't have that one bid.
I guess, Mayor, if I could?
Yes.
Joe made a motion to get rid of them if he changed it a little bit, I guess, to include you doing that, I guess, through city hall, and then whatever's remaining, remaining, get rid of correctly, I guess.
Yeah, we would have to make our first thing to declare them unusable. So maybe next council meeting, we'll start the process of putting this motion together.
Do we have to include anything for, is there any liability issues with that? No? Okay.
As is.
As is. Okay, that's all on that. The next thing was a storage container. I didn't know. I took some of the council stocks and where we kind of made that fenced-in area for the bin, there was some old rebar and some scrap metal that I had leaning up against that fence. And I made some room there for that container. So if that's where the council thinks a good spot would be, that's where I would suggest that we go. Back it up right even with the, the opening on the inside. It would work for us. And then we probably have to get some gravel here for the next couple of days. Level it out, move that container if that's, if that's okay with the council. I know there was some discussion on where to put it.
I think that'd be a good spot for it. It's out of the way and.
Accessible.
Accessible and not in your way.
It's not an eyesore.
So.
Other thing I have is, I know the last date for, for the rink attendant was yesterday, was it?
Monday.
I know we had two, two applicants, you know, still kind of taking applications, but we only got two. I'd like the council to move forward and, you know, hire Jerry Mackey. He's been, been the rink attendant for probably the last five, eight years. Does a really good job. He was one of the applicants that we, we got. If, if the council would move to hire him for rink attendant. And then the second one, I will, I will have against me for the council.
I'll move for the first one.
I'll second.
Moved by Councilor Polis, supported by Councilor Skinsitch to approve the hiring of Jerry Mackey as rink attendant. Any further discussion?
When does he start?
I'm thinking roughly around the twelfth of December that week. I know he might start flooding early here, but that's, that's kind of what I was thinking of, of starting him. I know he's got vacation going next week, and, and he comes back around eleven, or something. By around the twelfth.
So it's floodable already? It's cold enough to flood?
Yeah, it's getting there. Yeah. We've had a bucket, or freeze in there last night. But I, the mountains would be warm over the weekend, so that's where it's kind of cold.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose, say nay. Non-motion carries five zero.
That's all I have. That's all I had. You know, actually, I got, we kind of got a big salt container kind of going through here the last couple of days. We put the containers up in the park, you know, and we had a field box for the last, last fall.
Well, you personally, we got the grant for it.
But we got them out, but next spring, now we got to put the posts in for what the beginning's.
How many nets are there?
There's nine.
Nine?
Yeah, nine up in the top part. It kind of goes up around, around the pavilion up there in Rockville, and then back down along the line.
We'll have to really advertise that this spring. It's pretty, it's very popular.
Yeah.
Yeah, the Giants were just wanting us to do it with eighteen. That's a huge term that comes up.
That company that came in and looked at it, they said they were, it's very, very doable up there. They really liked it, so.
What's going on?
Future.
Yeah, I, I don't know if, I know there's different, like, different portions have different things at the beginning of each pool or each, whatever you call it, basket. So there might be some costs coming up, you know, for pictures and signings and what they're just saying. But that's all I have.
I had a couple of questions. Sam, this, this change order, what is this for? I'm looking through here, and there's so much paperwork. What is it actually for?
Twenty-five, I, I didn't get a chance to look at it. I think it was sent, what, maybe yesterday or something like that.
Is this, is aluminum planks here, or what? I see aluminum planks. Is that what this is for? I mean, you know, how, how do we approve it if we don't even know what the hell we're approving?
The, if it's a grading, that might have been the grading up around the, the upper on the fine screen area. There was those holes, and you just had the wood, wood planks going across. Yeah, that's what it looks like.
Are these aluminum planks then they're showing, or is it the old wooden ones?
No, those were the wooden ones. That's where the, that's where the grading went.
So is that what you think this change order is for, or?
I'm sure that's what some of it is for. It was like that whole list. There's a bunch on that list that we approved for like, you know, as a time and material type of work.
Yeah. No, yeah.
So this has probably been done already?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Actually, pretty much everything has been done except for those fabric frames.
So this is a change order that we approved, and they're just billing us for it? Is that what you're saying?
So.
Okay, that's all I understand. Oh, another question. I see you had some camera work done. Did camera work that we had a bill for, for the people that opened? Yeah, came and did the camera work on the sewer?
Oh, yes.
Did you find where the mud's coming from?
No, no. There was a, there was a spot down that we had, had David and Justin, they went along one day and tried to track that. And they came up to a spot down by, down by lower Virginia, lower Louisiana area. And we had, we had a push camera come in from, I think it was Minnesota Water. They had a push camera that they were trying to get through, and they couldn't. So that's when I got great exponents come up and try to, they had their camera come up, I had them jet it, and then run their camera through it. And they didn't see any problems with, with that line. I had them clean out that whole line there, so. And then I actually also had them take a look at another, another spot that didn't have any issues either, so. So, yeah, I, I just kind of, I don't know.
Are you still getting mud then?
It was just on that one heavy rain down. I, I don't, I don't know.
Do you think this is something like settling in a spot, and then you get a heavy rain and it washes that through?
I, I don't know. Could it be, I mean, we just did those, those manholes. We were kind of in the process of some of those manholes at the time. Could it have been just, you know, some of the dirt that was a little bit along those that fell into the pipe and then rained and washed them down? And that's what it was. So I, I mean, I, I don't know.
It sounds like it's been continuous, according to Tara. She's telling me it's been continued for a long time. And it happened as soon as this main street construction was complete.
Right.
Then it started.
Well, that's what.
And it's been ongoing for a long time.
That's what she said. But, I mean, I can't find anything where it's, you know, you think you would have a sinkhole beside the holes, but I, you know, I don't know. I mean, that, that was this one spot that we looked at, that, you know, there was potential there for, for something, but, you know, I, I don't know.
So you don't really have no idea what section of tone it's coming from? You haven't traced it, you know, to a few manholes and then?
That's what they did. One, a couple of guys went down, and that's where we, I went to this one section, you know, down in lower Louisiana area. And I know we had a tie in of the sewer line down there. We had a tie in to the, to Florida a couple of years before that. So that's where I got it cleaned. So that's where I got the cleaning televised and it didn't show any, anything in there, so. But I, like I say, I got it on, I got it on a chip, so I, I haven't yet looked at it, but, you know, the video camera operator said he didn't see anything. It's alarming.
Those areas, wasn't there like a sinkhole in the alley of New York East last year?
Last year, yeah, that was just because of how the, the, we fixed some of the, there were some cleanouts there years ago. And when we came down into that project, we came up with nice plastic, plastic, six inch plastic coming up for the cleanouts for the main sewer lines. And it didn't impact, it acted very good around those things and that's why those were sinking.
Would that be the same in that alley right across from Public Works behind the old Get and Go? Right on that wall, they had that sinkhole there where pavement was washing away?
Oh, yes. Well, that was different. That was a stone sewer that.
Okay.
But that, I'll bet it fixed in that.
Right.
So it's an ongoing issue then, right? Because it hasn't been cured?
It's, it's an ongoing issue, but we haven't had an issue since that last rain event. That, you know, that last big rain event went on in, in early September that if the, you know, built up a lot of any hubris. You know, we haven't seen, I haven't seen much since. When I went down there, the whole of the room was kind of played into brown, but, I mean, I haven't seen it like that.
So it could happen again in the next rain event?
It could, but at least we'll-
Yeah, that's, that's something that's gotta be followed up on to get it cured before.
I mean, one thing there is putting money towards cleaning and televising. It's been some, some years since I've, I've seen televised all the towns. I mean, that's where we gotta start televising, starting at one end of town and work through again. And, you know, that, that should help to find out if we can clean that spot. So, yeah, so we'll look at doing this spring, trying to get, get tent houses, uh, cleaning and televising again. And start trying to make our way through town in, in two or three years.
Is there any way to track like this spring or next spring when the snow melt? I know Deerwood's been a topic of discussion for-
Yeah, right.
Any way of tracking that or ruling it out or?
It's tough. I mean, I know there's, you can go out there and figure out where the manholes are and look, you know, and see if there's a lot of water coming in. But until, you know, tracking it is more when you, you can televise.
Right.
And then you can run the camera up there, you can physically see, okay, this one, so you can just, because there's any joints or whatnot. But I mean, the only thing we can do is go at the manhole.
Right.
Unless, unless we actually televise it. And I know I've been asking, seeing if we can, if we should look at cleaning and televising, you know, like, like rocks and vines area or, you know, that's not the city own sewer system. You know, part of it is now, you know, there is a city side to that, but where all the houses are, that's not the city's.
Right.
Well, if we could start cleaning and televising again, that'll, that will really come up with some really good ideas where, if there's any big holes or anything with that.
Excellent. Starting point anyways. Do you have anything else, Sam? Any further discussion?
Sam, you're just gonna get ahold of me when you're ready for that, right?
Yeah.
Excellent, thank you. Moving on to Library Director Su.
Hi. Hello, everyone, for the evening.
Hello.
I can tell you that we have new DVDs, new books, new STEM projects for all ages. Free to check out, especially, who's cool, welcome. And we have a new set of projects from the Three Two One Art Group. And it is for kids to make their own simple toys. Free for everyone, of course. You know, send the kids in, let them grab their bag. And that's what we have for tonight. Any questions?
I don't think so, Su. Thank you.
There is a change to their library meeting. It's usually the 1st Monday, but it'll be a Tuesday, December 5th instead.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear anything about.
Is there something else to change to your meeting for next, this coming up?
From Monday, we have a birthday girl and we're gonna go for Tuesday.
Thank you. And we'll move on to the Advisory Board's. Board, I should say.
All right. So I'll pick up where we left off in the work session. I'm actually gonna ask for you to approve the rules after we get all of the rates and things 'cause I wanna make sure that I can get any updates that you might have in all of that, so. So going back to the conversation about the rates. The recommendation from the campground board was essentially the rates that were listed on their simple daily rate, no split back and forth between a midweek and a weekend. Increasing the monthly rates to $600 and then with plus electric for the monthly rates. And then the other piece was, as I was ending, was the attaching the pavilion rental to Site D11 and increasing the price specifically to that one to make it into essentially a group or event campsite. And I didn't have a chance to get questions from you, so I guess I'd probably pause at this point if you have any questions about how we went about setting the rates or anything like that.
Yeah, on the, on the monthly rental, you said you charged for the electrical. Do you charge for water and sewer?
Uh, no, there's no mechanism for us. We don't have meters for each, you know, for water and sewer on each site, but we do have individual electric meters on those specific, on those dedicated sites. So, and from a, from a functional way, so there is a, and Sam, you can jump in if you want. So as far as the city-
Paul, try that one over there. Switch it, that microphone.
This one?
Yeah. See if it makes a difference.
Can you hear me? Okay. As far as how the process works. The city would still be reading the main meters. I believe there's four or five of them. And that's what would go into the billing system. The meters on the campsites themselves would be read by the campground host and entered into the billing, the campground billing system. So we'd be collecting the fees for the, for the rates to the campground system and that would go into the main revenue checking account. And that's how the city would receive the money for those specific sites. So the individual-
For the electrical though.
Yes, for the electrical, so.
For the water and sewer, you're just kind of estimating what their usage is and rolling it into their fee? Is that all you-
That's included, that would be included in the rates. Yes. So there's no separate charge.
How are you estimating the usage though? What are you, you know?
Right now, that's, there, there isn't any estimate, any estimation based on that. We're, we're just starting to get this year data on how much utilities are being used. That portion, water, sewer, garbage, any additional utilities. Once we have a full year of data that we're able to look at, we can consider for next year, is there a per camper user fee or is there, but we just don't have that information. Because we don't have, we don't have a, you know, a meter that would be able to be entered.
But getting back to the water and sewer side though, you know, you could, you could almost estimate how many units they're using and just charge them accordingly. You know, because the average two person is using like 25 units in town for a resident. So maybe they're using half of that, so you could estimate about 12 units used in water and then sewer also and see what that brings you and then you could roll that in or else you could separate it like that and say estimated 12 units used per month. And that would be water and sewer, if you wanted to add that to your bill. I'm just trying to get money for everything that you put out there. I'm trying to do.
I think, you know, we definitely should have that conversation. That was not part of the recommendation for rates for this year. I think we just, we just allow it to be more data and we need to be able to, that's where we need to be able to look at. You know, 12 months of water meter ratings. And, you know, just, just today, I was able to calculate how many individual check-ins we had and how many total number of guests we had at the campground. That number relates to the amount of water and sewer that we, that we use. So if you have a campsite that's occupied by four people, that's gonna be different than a campsite that's occupied by two people. And, but we don't have a complete set of data, so there's really no way for us to get to the type of charges that you're suggesting.
Yeah, there's just, you know, the monthly, they may be using their own shower and everything in their camper. And that's, that's what I'm getting at here. See, they may have more usage, you know, separate from what, you know, the overall usage is. It, I'm just, I'm just throwing it out there, you know, it's something to think about.
Certainly. How we can think about that and I, I will bring that back to the board to have discussions about how we can get to recouping all utilities. I, I just, I don't think we have the information at this point, absent individual water meters on every single site. I don't know for a, because whether you, if you have a completely self-enclosed unit, you may or may not decide to use your shower in your unit. You may decide to use the campground showers. And that's not metered. And so that wouldn't be included. So I, I think, you know, we just, we need to set out some objectives of how, what we wanna do and then map out a plan of how we get there.
Right.
And we just, we don't have that right now. So what we do have is we have a mechanism to capture that from an electric standpoint and that's the piece that we're suggesting that we act on this year.
So revenue that comes from the meter, that doesn't go back to the city for the electrical department. That stays in the campground fund.
It's, it, it is collected by the campground fund. However, there are reports and that's actually one of our recommendations. We get to specifically what we would charge individual campsites. The recommendation, we do have the ability through reports, through the campground system so that we know campground or campsite A3 used X amount of kilowatts, which equals X amount of money. So that on a monthly basis, we could literally take that exact amount out of the campground revenue account and put it into the utility fund directly. So that's, that's the goal, is to be able to use, you know, the tourist-generated revenue to fund the utility fund. Or to appropriately put that money into the utility.
Another question. You know, everything's plus tax. What is the tax?
So the state tax is 7.8 or 6.875. And then there's 0.5% county tax. There's a 6% that is specific to the first responders. And then there's 3% logic tax. So all total, it's about 14%, 14, 15%?
So about 14 and 15%, yeah. Whatever those come to, yeah, okay. Okay. And then that state tax is mailed to the state after, quarterly or when is that?
Just when you come a month after you receive one.
Every month it has to be received by then, okay. Pardon?
If states don't, they won't take checks.
Oh, okay.
You can go to the Minnesota State website.
And one of the things that John and I have this afternoon is the, the new system has a specific tax report. So it basically will allow city halls to come in and basically look at tax, set the, the date parameters of the time period that they're looking at and print. And they've got all of the data of all of the taxes collected in one spot.
Oh, good, yeah.
So that's, that's one of the things that we specifically look for in choosing the system. Additional, we included them on the rates. I wanna kind of make sure that we go through some of them. The specific, the electric rates, rather than a specific rate amount, we came up with a formula that we would like the city council to approve, knowing that the utility rates are kind of in flux right now. And essentially the formula was a 3 cent per kilowatt premium that would be calculated based on current commercial rate. So right now, I believe the current, current commercial rate is 1.0506 per kilowatt. And so it would be 3 cents above that. Now, if the rates go forward and you increase that by the, by the month set, that would, you know, it would be on top of whatever commercial rate. So we'll be able to adjust that, however. The thought process on this is really driving profit margin for the city. The city, of course, pays a certain rate, it's like 5, 6 cents per kilowatt?
6.5.
6.5. And so getting up to the area of 13 and a half to 14 and a half cents per kilowatt that campers are using, that essentially would mean that any, any electricity used would, 50% of it would be profit going directly to the city. And then moving on to some of the other fees. The new system has an opportunity for the city to change the reservation fee that's assessed for every reservation. The current system charges 3.50 per reservation. The new system allows the city to manipulate that and charge what we want to. Kind of a average that we've kind of looked around at other campgrounds is somewhere between 5 and 10, 5 and 10 dollars per reservation. So we're proposing that if it's an online reservation, something that we don't have to interact with, the fee would be $5 per reservation. Meaning the city could keep, the dollar would be a profit for every single reservation. And then if it's something that has human intervention, phone call, at the desk, whatever, it's an $8 reservation fee. So then the city would keep, essentially 6.50 per reservation. And so those two things will be, by making that one change, would be approximately 4 to 5,000 dollars in increased revenue on an annual basis. And then another new feature that we have in the system is to allow the opportunity to sell either early or late check-in for a campsite. So this essentially candles the situation where our check-in is at noon. We have a lot of people that wanna come in, they wanna check in at 9 o'clock. If the site is available, this would allow us to monetize that. Basically say for 15 dollars more, yes, if you check in at 9 o'clock. That means that Wendy has to do a little bit more work to make sure that it's ready. But we're making revenue off of that. Same thing on checkout process. Checkout is at, checkout's at noon. And so if somebody wants to stay until 5 o'clock, which is very common on Sundays, if they wanna come and do an extra day of writing, they can pay an additional 15 dollar fee, again, if the site is available. We're monetizing that extra time and we're making customers essentially happy because they can stay a little bit, extend the vacation a little bit. Hotels commonly do this. It's just kind of a low-hanging fruit type of thing. We estimate that that could pull in approximately an additional 1,000 dollars in revenue per year. The next items on here with water and sewer use charges, this was something that was, I already talked about this summer. So this is not a change from what you've already asked for, but it is included in here to have it all in place. And then other charges, some of these are, some of them are not. The additional tent fee is currently at 25 dollars. It's just on the list. The over occupancy is $5 per person per, uh, per night. That's existing. Cancellation fee is $10. There's no change for that. We are recommending adding an institution fund fee for any checks that don't clear. It's a common practice that there is a service charge for that. It's a $25 if we're working for that. We talked previously in the rules portion about firewood violation fees, $25 per unauthorized firewood. Campsite cleanup fee, this is existing, is a $35 fee. Campsite cleanup fee, this is existing, uh, is a thirty five dollar fee. Um, one that is a new one that has been recommended, this actually came, uh, per Wendy's recommendation that the board agreed with, is a ten dollar per pet fee for up to three pets maximum, which is the city ordinance for the number of pets that you can have on a property. Um, and so that is new, um, that will be system automated, that's approved. Um, a pet waste cleanup fee, this is new and specific to dog poop, um, which is probably one of the, Wendy will probably tell you that's probably one of the more common things that she has to deal with on a regular basis. Um, so putting that in there. And then, um, we talked about this a little bit, and unusual pet fee, it's also a frequent kind of violation. She's kind of chasing people around and by putting a, a fee for violation to that, it helps to kind of keep people, uh, you know, you can give a warning and say, hey, keep the pet on leash, otherwise it would be twenty five dollars fine. Here's your first warning after this, we're going to do, that tends to control people and keep them in line. So, um, that is the total of the rate recommendations. Um, and I'll pause for any questions.
I'm at pet waste cleanup fee. So do they have an open credit card there that you're gonna, when they leave the site and now you're gonna charge them after they're gone?
All, all campers need to have a credit card on, creditor to have a card on file. And that is one of the things that's included in the campground policies, that if they damage the site or if they violate any of the things, we can, we can collect after they do. That's pretty common with hotels, if you damage a hotel room, you can charge for it.
Okay, yeah. Oh, you know, you were saying you had, you checked with nine other campgrounds around?
Yep.
And everybody kind of stays the same, right? They don't, and when, when one raises it, they all usually follow, right? Is that all this works?
Generally, yep, yep. Um, the city of Gilbert tends to be, um, tends to respond to rates, setting rates a little bit earlier than others. And so there's a little bit of, that other cities seem to be following. Um, that's the trend that I've seen the last couple of years. Um, I don't think that's necessarily a bad thing, I think we have, being a little biased, I think we have one of the better campgrounds in the area, considering the types of facilities and the investments that we put in it. Um, so it makes sense that we have a bigger opportunity to kind of drive some of the rates.
Oh, so we're kind of the lead that everybody else follows?
To some extent, I think there's some exceptions, um, you know, especially when it comes to, you know, the, the monthly rates. We're actually catching up in some of the ways, um, because there are several other campgrounds that are charging six, six twenty five or more. Um, uh, so we're, we're actually, our recommendations for the monthlies is to actually catch up to some of the others. But for the most part, on the, on the daily, we, 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 we're, we're kind of towards the top and others tend to, to follow.
Okay.
Um, so that is, um, I'll ask for a, a, you have a recommendation to ask that the city, you know, to vote on this so that we can get these implemented. Um, we do have some hard timelines, especially this year with getting the new system set up. We have to get these implemented in time, it takes a fair amount of time to get this all set up. But rather than having to go back and change stuff, it's easier to do it just all at once for us. Um, so, um, I don't know if you want to do the motions for these after we get through everything, or if you want to do them over time.
Are you, are you not through?
No.
I'm through with the rates, for the rates portion.
For the rates, yeah, no.
I'll make a motion to approve the rate proposals, uh, submitted by the campground board.
I think it's easier to do it one at a time. Moved by Councilor Heitzman, supported by Councilor Pulis, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose, say nay. Non-motion carries five zero to approve the increased rates for the campground.
Um, the next one's fairly straightforward.
Move. Sorry, that was a joke. I couldn't resist.
Fairly straightforward, because of the new functionality of the system, I have to ask permission to, to do this, to move forward. So, um, it's essentially the decision as to whether or not for the city to absorb the cost of credit card transaction fees, or for the consumers to absorb this, is essentially what we're, um, talking about. Um, the board's recommendation, particularly because of the dollar amounts we're talking about and where we are, kind of in a period of time with consumers, is our recommendation is to pass this on directly to consumers. I've just gotten the bids from the two systems in question. Um, and so the example that's actually spot on with the high, seventy percent fee, which is two point nine percent, uh, of transaction total, that's a transaction. We're still kind of negotiating with the, with the processors that that may actually have some opportunity to come down. Um, both of them do accept Visa, Mastercard, Discover, American Express. We currently do not accept American Express. Um, as you know, Delta hub is in Minneapolis, and a lot of people have scammed those cards. And so adding in American Express is kind of an important one in our particular market. Um, and so the way that this would look from a consumer's standpoint is as they fill out their, their pricing for their reservation, um, that's listed, and they accept the policies, and then they get to the last page before it hits and they select whether they want to, you know, pay the credit card or. If they select credit card, then it pops up and it's saying, you know, here's the fee that would be assessed, et cetera, and then they hit submit. So they have a full disclosure in the process, uh, that they are paying, uh, the credit card fees. This change, right now, we are absorbing about five to six thousand dollars in expenses by not passing the center.
So what are the other options to paying if they, uh, if you choose credit card, okay, but you can't pay on cash online?
Or, um, there, the system has just recently added, unfortunately, I don't know enough about it, uh, it has added Venmo, uh, Zelle, which is PayPal products, and there's one more. Uh, so there's a couple of different ways to offer gift cards, which, um, we, we don't produce those, we don't have that as a payment. So there are several different methods of payment to produce.
So do you accept chats, personal checks, yes?
Yes, yeah.
I thought we were getting away from that.
Um, we can, uh, our, the, the most likely form of payment is going to probably be credit card for those that are, that are purchasing online. Uh, from a process standpoint, once somebody has made an online reservation, their credit card is stored in the system. And most cases, probably ninety nine percent of the cases, people will say, yeah, just, just charge my card. There will be some that will opt to pay by cash or by check, and that's certainly, we've had discussions about being a cashless campground eventually. There are some in the area that have a payment app. We haven't been quite as aggressive on that. Um, we'd like to get the system done first before we, and see, again, getting data and figuring out how many people are, are actually paying in cash, is that something we want to do eventually? We could in the future.
And I think that passing the percentage on to the consumer is pretty standard at most, most places now. You know, it's just the way it goes, so.
So honestly, it's, it's a way for banks to make money, and for a long time, merchants have been held hostage to that. Um, so this is a way for us to manage and control.
So I will make the motion to allow the campground board to, uh, make that change and pass that expense on to the consumer. Support.
Motion by Councilor Heitzman, supported by Councilor Pulis, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose, say nay. Non-motion carries to have the campground assess the credit card use fees, I guess.
Um, the next two items are, um, they are optional. Um, our recommendation is for them to be implemented, certainly wanted to have some conversation about it. Um, one is the system has, the new system has the ability to allow us to offer what's called a site lock. Um, that, uh, think of that basically as an insurance policy. Um, you go through, you pick where you want to be. Usually people want to be there for a specific reason, um, but as you know, in an operation, sometimes you do have to move people around. Um, and so many campgrounds that use this feature essentially say, okay, we'll guarantee you this spot for a fee. If we have to move you, we will then give you a percentage off of the rest of your state as a kind of make good kind of thing. Um, it is a way to capture new revenue that we are not getting right now. Um, I use this at my own campground, um, I know that state parks are slowly, not all of them, but I know that there are select ones that are starting to use this. I know that there are others that I've seen a lot of in Minnesota specifically, um, that are starting to add this in as it's been rolled up in reservation systems. Um, so it's essentially saying, hey, check a box and we'll guarantee your site. Um, we do disclose kind of what this is and how this works as far as process to the customers and the terms and conditions in the purchase process, so they know what they're buying, there's nothing hidden behind this. Um, my experience is that approximately seventy to eighty percent of people that go through the online shopping experience, they'll select this option. And so they're, they're essentially giving us money just because we're asking.
What, what percentage is that?
Um, from, from my experience, it varies, but it's been, it's been pretty consistently, I've done it for three years now. Um, uh, it's been consistently between seventy to eighty percent of customers.
No, but I mean, what percentage do you, it's an insurance policy.
It's a flat fee, you have to say.
Fifteen bucks.
Fifteen bucks each time?
Fifteen dollars, which is about two hundred.
Oh, okay.
So, so are, are customers right now able to select the campsite they want with no extra fee?
Correct, however, we could move them.
Right.
If we need to. We can still move them under this.
Yep.
Um, it's just if we do, we'll be giving them something back.
So, so I guess, as, as we're approving all of these additional fees for the campground for the coming year, um, is this, is there a point at which there's too many new fees for the seasoned customer? That's been there for a long time, all of a sudden, holy cow, now I'm paying for electricity and I'm gonna pay to select my campsite and I gotta... Is there a threshold that we're going to?
I think that's a valid point. Uh, I think, um, it's one that we talked about, um, you know, kind of the, the nickel in dining.
Yeah, that's exactly right, that's what I'm worried.
I think if we were, this is just my personal, I'm not going to speak for the rest of the board. Um, I think if we were in a situation where we didn't have a very specific attraction, uh, there would be less, less value to our campsites in general throughout the city, um, in which that, that would be a riskier situation. I do not believe that we are in that situation. Um, I believe people are going to come to Gilbert for a very specific reason, going off road, and there are only X number of campsites in town.
Where can we find one?
And this is optional, and it is marked very clearly as being optional.
That's what the state's, it's whether or not you want it or you don't want it, so click it.
Yeah, right. Well, and that's, that's, I, I would, if I were the camper, I'd probably check in early, I'd probably check out late, I'd probably select that campsite, wow, holy crap, now I'm up seventy five bucks and I haven't even got there yet.
But I think in fairness, you know, online booking prices, if you're not happy with something, you can go back and sell it for it. And you can change that.
Yeah, that's fair.
Completely within the consumer's choice.
Just so that it's out there, that was my thought concern.
I think that's absolutely valid, it's, it's a frustration I think all of us have with any online shopping.
Well, I make a motion then to allow you to implement the site lock option, uh, fifteen dollar site lock fee.
I'll support.
Moved by Councilor Heitzman, supported by Councilor Skinsitch to approve the site lock feature. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose, say nay. Non-motion carries five zero.
And the last one, uh, as far as the rates and stuff, is we also have the opportunity, now with our old system, we could have done this, however, we would have been charged to implement this. This feature is free according to the system, um, and it's a concept called dynamic pricing. Um, essentially, to simplify it, is the fuller your campground gets, the more valuable your campsites are, therefore, the rates change according to that portion. Um, and so there's a lot of complicated ways to do this. Um, we, we need to kind of net it down on, on probably the most simple version of this. Actually, there's one simpler, which is to use just one threshold. Um, but we came up with two thresholds, um, essentially, when the campground is between, if it's below sixty percent occupancy for future bookings, it's just the rack rates, there's no change. If it is between sixty percent and eighty five percent, everything goes up a dollar. If it's, if it's above eighty, eighty five percent, so eighty six percent to a hundred percent, it goes up two dollars. Um, and so it's, it's basic supply or supply versus demand economics. Um, it's, it's a way to get more revenue out of the campground. I think I try to simplify it as much as I can, but this is kind of, I don't know kind of what your thoughts are on this.
Would this apply to like, so, okay, you're getting to sixty percent. The, the first sixty percent of the people got it at, you know, ten dollars a night. Uh, the remaining forty percent now, actually fifteen percent of that, so seventy five percent of the people, that little sliver would have to pay more, and then the, the top rate would be even charged more. How about those first people, are they being charged those additional dollar values?
Once you, once you make a reservation, it is locked in, it's, you've got a confirmation, you've got here's your details of what you're paying. And so you're, you're locked into your reservation.
Do you expect a lot of your rates to go up again next year? Like, uh, the, the initial rates that we've already approved increasing, do you expect them to go up again next year? I mean, that's, that's hard to say, inflation, cost of goods and services, I understand.
Looking into it, first of all, I think, um, I think if inflation levels out, um, I think we're gonna have a very different conversation next year versus where we are now. Um, I think if, it, it's, it's really, we're at the point now where we're really kind of trying to look at how much costs are driving, you know, how much revenue we need to, to have. Um, the other piece is it also kind of depends on how much you all want from the campground to be able to use for other things in the city, whether it's to buy some more attachments, whether it's to help plug budget apps or, you know, your, your booths. And I think this, I will speak for the head of order, we would be more than happy to kind of get that feedback as early as possible so we can start setting revenue targets. Um, that's actually the right way to drive this conversation, is to ask what do we need from the campground and then map out a plan to get there. Um, this particular proposal is basically just focusing on trying to do the things we can to increase the total revenue so that the city has more money to be able to do this for the things that we do in town.
Do other campgrounds in the area use this dynamic pricing?
It's, uh, this is a relatively new concept within the last five to six years. Um, I am noticing more of it specifically in Minnesota. It is very popular in some delta cities, uh, some, some delta states. Um, but it's, it's just kind of starting to become more standardized. Um, almost every system out there, uh, any, uh, newer systems are offering this. And so as newer systems are offering this capability, more campgrounds are taking advantage of it. So, and that's part of it, again, we really didn't have the opportunity to use this with the old system because we would have had to pay to use this feature. This is something that's included in the system.
Well, and, and I guess, looking at it big picture wise, if all of the other fifteen dollar fees along the, the reservation course, heaven scared of a way already, this extra two dollars a night, probably won't either. So I guess I would make a motion to approve the dynamic pricing, uh, approve implementing that dynamic pricing for the coming year.
And you should also go without saying that this in particular is going to be something we're going to study very in depth as we come into this conversation for next year.
Oh, so you don't have a projection how much it'll bring in?
Uh, I mean, if you want me to throw a dart at a dartboard, somewhere between three, two to three thousand dollars.
It's a buck or two a night, time per campsite, only when it's overbooked.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I don't even know.
I'll second that motion.
Motion by Councilor Heitzman. Motion by Councilor Heitzman, supported by Councilor Pottingen to approve the implementation of the dynamic pricing. Any further discussion?
I just wanna add one thing on this. I, I, I agree that it's probably not gonna tier them away, but are we gonna get an instance where one person's gonna be talking to another campground and say, well, I only paid this much and you paid that much? And then, you know, is this too much all at one time?
And to, to follow up on that, well, if you wanna put your four wheeler on a trailer and, and travel from Babbitt to get here, go ahead. Otherwise, you can use our campground, which is right by the park. So that's, I think what the campground board is counting on is, is that that's why they're coming, is because we have what other places don't.
Another way of answering that too, and probably a better way of looking at it is that as you buy an airline ticket, as you buy a hotel room, the closer you get into your arrival date, the more precious those commodities are. And so if, you know, you have somebody in age, you know, eighteen and a nineteen and they're sitting right next to each other and all the amenities are the same and one's paying two dollars more than the other one, yes, essentially it's the same site, but the second one booked a week before they arrive, right? And so there's less opportunity to sell that site. It's a more precious commodity. So all of the parameters of the booking process are not the same.
Right. Are you using this at your campground?
Uh, I've been experimenting with it, yep. So I haven't heard any feedback, negative or positive. It's just, it's just kind of one of those things. And it's, the thing is, it's, it's one of the nice things about online booking is that it is a hundred percent transparent. The price is what's in the process.
I'm just thinking it, it puts us, if there's anything else available in the area, that's just another dollar or two that might push somebody somewhere else. Granted, I, you, with, with everything, I think with all the rate increases and granted, I know a lot of them are options if they wanna take advantage of it or not, but I think this one, in my opinion, I think this one could just wait.
I would almost agree with that because I, I'd fear that we're gonna be pushing customers away. I get with the cost of everything increasing. If there was more study, research on it, I could see, I get your point and it makes perfect sense, but...
I'll toss this out.
Possibly next year even, you know, depending how it goes, but...
We can, we can potentially readdress this. I know that this, the way that this feature functions, you can set some very specific kind of parameters on this. So this is something that we wanna do a trial on. We could figure out something that would make sense to be like, let's try this for the month of June or the month of August or, or whatever. We have to kind of really sit down and see what would make sense as far as what would be that trial. And it could be set up that way too, so that it's only applies to, to some of the reservations and not all of them.
I think, I think we should implement it and then if we see a problem with it, you can always take it down, can't you, at any time?
Literally any day.
Right. I, I don't see people leaving for two dollars, not this day and age.
And that's the, the, Paul's analogy of the, of making plane reservations. You know, if I wanted to fly next Tuesday, it costs a hell of a lot more than if I had made that reservation last July. It just, that's the reality of it.
I think, well, we can vote on it, I guess.
Now the motion is...
Yeah, motion and supported. This is a discussion. Any further discussion?
No, I guess I'd just like to put in there, like what Paul said, is maybe this summer we could try it out, set up a timeframe just to try it out to see if it's actually really worth doing. I don't know, to see what kind of dollar amount or anything, but...
What, what do you recommend? The first month of the year, the third month of the season?
Honestly, you kind of put me on the spot. I, I'd have to look at kind of like, a big portion of this is where are our visiting guests too?
See, and, and the booking opens up on January first. So, and this only affects the people that are making those reservations for, you know, June third, they're making it at the end of May. So it's not affecting the people that are planning to come anyway. It's, it's the last minute flyer that's deciding, hey, you know, next Tuesday I wanna get there. That's my bid.
As you're price checking and you see ours is two dollars more because we're eighty percent full versus going over to Boawabik and I'm just a frequent flyer rolling through town, I'm gonna go to the cheaper one.
Yeah, but for two dollars, if you're dragging your four wheeler and everything, I'm saying two dollars.
Not two dollars, like twenty cents nowadays.
I, I mean, the way, the cost is...
We can vote on it, yet we're, we still have a discussion.
Are we gonna modify the motion for a trial period or are we voting for the implementation?
I, I guess just I vote do it and be done with it.
I vote do it too.
I mean, if we see a problem with it, we can turn it off.
Yep.
That's, that's easier to do than the, you know, go back and forth kind of thing.
Right.
But where would that problem be noticed?
When would that problem be noticed?
When people start complaining.
Yeah, certainly.
People start complaining.
Wendy would probably notice it the first and so certainly keeping in good contact with her about that. You know, I, I don't know that we've really had a lot of complaints about rates in the past.
We just raised them.
Um, somebody that's put on the waitlist, this would almost certain, this would always apply basically, virtually, because they would be in that, you know, if they're on a waitlist, that means we're a hundred percent full.
Is that adjustable? That sixty, that, what'd you say, eighty percent to kicks in or sixty?
Yeah, but you can, like, the percentages, it's just wanna put for the thresholds, that's completely...
So then motion should include what percentage we're gonna set right also?
You know, that, the, the thresholds are there. I mean, he's got the, you know, we, if we approve their dynamic pricing, there's the first threshold, there's a second threshold that they've already proposed. It's a buck sixty to eighty-five.
Between eighty, between eighty-six and sixty to eighty-five.
So cheap, I would say.
Yeah.
We're talking peanuts, but it's all of this at once and I have had feedback and people saying, you're increasing your rates? People aren't gonna come.
I've listened to other cities, cities that have campgrounds, they're all looking at substantial rate increases. I know some tours, the E D W, they're looking at starting at ninety bucks a night.
And I will, I shared this stat with, with Jill and Mary. So within the last couple of days, we received a nationwide study. And one of the things that they found was, I can't have it here with me. So according to this, by January, the average nationwide per night was six hundred dollars. And so we are significantly below the national average. I, I do know that there's another study that's due to come out, I think this month, that breaks the counterregion. And my recollection from last year's study from Midwest, which is essentially Minnesota, it's like our five C area, that had us at our average per night somewhere near fifty-one, fifty-two. And so we're even still below that. So that was a lot of, a lot of things that we can go into and talk about why that is. But the fact remains, we're still below what most campgrounds in America are as far as rates.
But, but we're kind of setting the pace for the area ones is what you told us just a minute ago.
Yep.
So we're already high then for this area.
The whole region is, is depressed compared to nationwide.
Right. So, right.
Well, the motion was made to accept this implementation of the dynamic pricing. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Nay. Motion fails, three to two.
Well, this would be the opportunity to make a motion to do a trial, you know, June, July or May.
Wait, he's gonna, you're doing it on yours, right?
Yeah.
So we just see how that turns out and then we...
I guess we don't have to be the lead runner on everything.
Because I have, I have more than two, just two criteria. And the other piece is that some of that's proprietary information that I, wouldn't really be appropriate for me to share.
I say let's see all these other changes go and go from there.
Yeah, maybe next year it's something we can, just my opinion anyway, look at next year.
My, my thoughts on that.
The rest of it, it looks great. I just...
I liked the theory, but...
The three straightforward is the rules and policies which now include all of this, all of these agreements that are included if I just give them a few policies.
And those policies are the ones you have listed in here.
I'll move.
Part.
Moved by Councilor Polis, supported by Councilor Heitzman to approve the policies for the campground. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Non-motion carries five to zero.
Thank you so much and we will have the new system ready by January first and I'm training employees.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paul, for the work you've done. Thanks for everything.
Yeah, you and your committee. Thanks a lot.
All right. Let me move on to Clerk Zoller.
Thank you. Financial update, currently in our general fund, less outstanding checks, less our current register you just approved and payroll through this coming Friday, we have four hundred eighty-one thousand nine hundred twenty dollars and seventy-seven cents. Probably have about two hundred thousand dollars in expenses that I can request from both the savings account and as well as PFA. And then we'll have a little bit more from the campground for I triple R B that we can request monetary dollars back from that grant as well, which will rebuild that up. Campground has a hundred and twenty-one thousand two hundred eighty-four dollars. And I really don't have a whole lot of updates other than that, unless you guys have questions.
I got questions. Actually, a couple of things. The A O A thing that, did we ever find out what the deal was with, do we still have a lease with them?
No, I, I talked to A E O A, but I still have to get through to Delta Dental, figure out who I can ask and then I triple R B. Just figure out where's with what and who, 'cause if I triple R B and their agreement's done, then I understand our agreement's done, so. But I have touched base with A E O A, so they don't run into it.
And the dentist thing is all taken care of?
The dentist thing is moving forward. We have just the development agreement now. I don't know if we need to bring it back to the table because maybe your guys' decision has changed, then the easement. And I think Sam had suggested going just the full length of the lot, so we'll need to know what those changes are, where we wanna look at that before we do that development agreement to add that portion of lot seventeen by their stairwell.
Which I talked to Sam and he suggested that it may be easier for everybody because if we just do that corner piece, now the dental people, if they do any work on the side of their building, do they have to ask permission or worry about being on the city property? Or do we have to worry about them? If we just did that whole sliver from the alley up to the sidewalk, give them that five feet is it?
Five or eight feet.
Yeah, and give them that whole section. That way they can do whatever work they need to do on the side of their building. They don't have to ask the city permission. They don't... And it'd be easier to plot, I think, than trying to cut out a little five by eight.
Otherwise you have some irregular lot.
Exactly.
Give them what they need.
Make it straight.
So Randy did draft a resolution and development agreement adjustment, but that might need to change, so half of that would be done.
I don't know.
So we wanna do, should we do a motion just for the amendment change or is something written that you approved last meeting?
Yeah, there's a, there's a quick change. We can amend the change and then we'll update the language of the documents that we want to change.
I'll move.
So what is the length of the, or the width of the lot now?
I would say it's a twenty-five foot lot, you know, in between the public works garage and their property, it's probably a twenty-five foot lot.
Do you know what their stairway is?
I don't see going eight. Why don't you just keep it a minimum five, you know? I'm sure there's never gonna be a problem with them putting a ladder onto our property, you know, if they wanna do something off of it.
I don't know. I just was, you know, I mentioned, you know, if it's a stairway or something like that.
Do you know what they need for a stairway?
Usually they're five feet wide, so I don't know, but, you know, that's what I said, eight feet.
Eight feet would be good. That'd give them...
Then you cover that in a five foot lift.
So you're recommending eight?
That's what I would...
I don't agree. Even if you have to put a ladder up to it.
I make the motion to approve for eight.
Five is...
Would you think we're gonna deep high end putting a ladder up?
No, but if there's something else there, I mean, if, if for whatever reason the city decided to put something on that seventeen foot wide lot.
That's why you keep it at five, yeah. Because if we did decide to put something there that infringed on them, then we wouldn't have to ask them for permission. That's why you keep it at five.
I made the motion for eight. Jeremy's supporting.
Well, the whole idea of not selling the whole lot was because you didn't want anything between the buildings.
Wanted that buffer.
We wanted a buffer. So let's keep the buffer bigger.
So now we wanna...
Keep the buffer bigger by only going five.
In case we wanna put something there?
Whatever. It was all about the buffer, so let's keep the buffer as big as we can.
I would say eight feet. Why have it exactly?
I would agree to give them a little extra foot or something because if that stairwell's right there, they're gonna need some room. And the reality, nothing's probably gonna go there.
And there's...
It's a buffer between their building and ours and hopefully we can make it look nice for the downtown effect, but...
Bottom line is it's a taxpaying utility-using business.
And it still gives us that buffer.
And we said seventeen foot offer, not twenty. That's the only difference then.
Yeah. So the motion was made.
Motion is supported.
Motion by Councilor Polis, mo, seconded by Councilor Skinsich to approve the modification to the, I guess I would use, to the property proposal for lot seventeen.
Yep, just to amend the development agreement and then corresponding resolution of the transfer.
Yeah, that.
Exactly. Any further discussion? And that's the, for the eight foot lot. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
One. Motion carries four to one.
And the last thing I got is we've had nothing but trouble with these microphones. Can you see if Randy can get a quote on these, replace these or maybe get a, a grant from I triple R B maybe?
Do you guys wanna look into the lapel side or just still keeping this like this?
Well, I don't think it's usually ours.
These would be nice, rather than having to sit like this to talk into it all the time. It'd be nice to have something else that's a little more user friendly. And all of those can go in the trash 'cause they do nothing but feedback.
Well, that's, there's something generating a feedback loop between, that microphone is picking up what's being transmitted back.
We've spent, well, over the five years I've been sitting up here, I don't know how much, trying to get that system figured out. And every time I think, you gotta figure it out, yeah, it just...
We do have an audio company here in town. It's a small business. This is essentially an audiovisual issue. My recommendation is call in Mr. Cap from Exans Audio and have them work with their food production folks to make sure that we have a system that works both broadcasted here but also on TV.
I know that we did it last year. Randy did a quote from them. It was quite significant.
Yeah, and I know he did look at pricing the lapel mics and their spendy.
We do have some of our headset that can come over and come across, but...
Or just a little longer mic.
Yeah, we're concerned more of breathing. If you get turned off, you know, he's doing that thing.
What are you saying? We're a bunch of mouth breathers or?
Just to see if maybe there's a grant or something. I don't know. At least look into it.
It is an issue. It has been an ongoing issue. All right. Anything else for Clerk Zoller?
That's it. Thank you.
All right, old business. Sam? Waste water treatment plant or the water treatment plant, anything? Excellent. Thank you. We'll move on to the new business. I think we covered all motions from the work session.
Do you need to make any motions about splash talk? Is there any decisions that need to be made?
No, I think, uh...
You kinda gave him a direction to go, yeah, okay.
Yep, yep.
Hopefully he'll move it.
Yeah, well, monitor it. I'll try to monitor it better than I did. Yeah, well, monitor it, I'll try to monitor it better than I did.
Business, if I may, just like the amount of the water light board is changing, the meeting from the sec, the third Thursday to the third Wednesday, starting in January, six o'clock. And.
When was that from Leo?
Third?
Sorry.
We used to have it, we have it till the end of this year, the third Thursday at six o'clock. Now we're changing it to the third Wednesday at six o'clock.
Okay.
And the other thing I'd like to just ask to make sure that with the rates, to be sure that McKinley also gets that notification, they had the chance to be here today, they weren't. Make sure that they know, because they'll have the rate decreased as we'll decide. And then the other thing I would really like to comment on is, I think the campground committee has done a lot of work, and a word of thanks to their efforts, because they've really brought it around. I can see from the last three years, before that it was self-rescuer, now it has some form of function, and they're giving you good advice, I'm glad you're eating it, because it's, it's a financial increase for the city in the middle. Thank you.
Thank you Leo.
One thing I'd like to add to that, you only have three members on the water and light board now, right Leo?
We need two more.
We need two more, so if you could make that announcement, Mayor, you know, that's working for people.
Yes, and I know some of the other boards have been low to planning and zoning to campground board. All our boards can use some volunteers, so please, if you're interested in any of the boards, sign up.
Can we nominate people? I nominate Ty Teacher? I'm sorry.
If it were only that easy.
Watch it when you go home, Mark.
The only thing I have with that last answer from the working session is, you know, taking consideration, you guys are talking about Splash Town, and what town, not down. They, we did do a considerable, a lot of garbage down there, they were a big user, so just keep that in mind. If you're going to do a lease, you know, for a monthly lease or that, you know, if you really don't have the weight control, certainly dumpster down there, so make sure that these covers or whatever covers garbage.
Yeah, there was a lot of garbage strewn about, right, that you guys had to clean up?
Yeah, that's normal, but this is just even in a dumpster, we actually put, I think, two extra dumpsters down there.
Yeah.
And the Porta-Johns, didn't we put more down there too?
We did not.
They paid for them, okay.
They did, yeah.
But we did put two extra.
It just runs into a sticky wicket of, you know, this is, this is a state, excuse me, a city park that we have down there, and we're just essentially granting that to a private business to use, and that's, that's great, we're getting people to come to our town and use that, but it's.
It's tax.
I can't wrap my head completely around the efficacy of doing that continually.
More of a long-term lease with a different price, because last year, if you remember, we just did what we do for food trucks, because we didn't have anything else to go off of.
Right.
So this is a little different all season long, that I think we need to look at that as well, and maybe Brian can give us some suggestions as a different type of lease as well.
And as far as prime real estate in Gilbert, that's probably the, the primist, you know, it's, it's right there. If you wanted to sell ice cream, that's where you're going to sell it.
I did have the county tell me as well, at the parcel we sold down there, that they do anticipate starting to build in March. You know, so that could change that dynamic a little bit as well, I, my understanding from the county is, they plan on putting a home there, so. That might change the scenery a little bit as well.
Right, just my opinion, if, if, there's a lot of things that have to be changed, otherwise I don't see them benefiting us down there, because there's a lot of issues that need to be addressed, and if they're not going to follow or heave to those issues, then, you know, we have a lot of problems down there, so.
But I think they will.
I think we need our, there's real signs down there, so.
We need to work with them and.
Also thirty to fifty bucks on Amazon, and between Ty and Sam and I, we just get better signage, you know, handicap park, and I think we're going to add, so they can find our last conversations, I believe, so that it's posted, you know, excellent finds, and then what, aquatic signs and different things, that'll help a lot.
Yeah, I think so.
I have a, it's, it's quick and easy to use Amazon to get the signs, there's, there's a sign company in Virginia too, though, that.
The Savvy Sign.
Yeah, and then. Yeah, price it to, at least give the local competition an opportunity to participate.
I didn't make the, the working session, but is he coming back then? With a proposal of some sort, or?
No, what we, what we suggested is that they have to move the building, for liability purposes. And then that council has to sit down and come up with what we're going to give them, and that we would work with them.
Okay, so we encouraged him to get a trailer with wheels, so that, you know, that primary office that he has there can be just clicked and hauled, rather than, you know, rather than having a stick-built Morton building there.
So.
Alright.
That was the gist of that. Alright, any further discussion then? Move on to liquor licenses.
I'll move, Bart.
Aye.
Moved by Counselor Skengich, supported by Counselor Polis, to renew the liquor licenses, any further discussion?
How much are, do these people pay for their liquor licenses?
I wonder if they prefer that scenario, and she agreed the documentation, and I wonder if anything part of that, it varies, um, just depending on sale or off sale.
Six, seven hundred, is that?
It goes between six hundred and nine hundred dollars.
Oh, between six and nine, okay, um, do their taxes have to be paid in order to grant them, and does anybody check on that?
The state does.
The state will check on that before they allow, issue the license, okay.
They also have to have their liability forms to us before we will grant that license.
Okay.
And there's no exceptions to that.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further discussion?
Mayor and Council, also we do a background check every year, I sign off on every one of those licenses. And then any, one issue we've had in the past with one bar is, what will happen is, they won't pay their state tax when they have the beer trucks come to town. So the state will pull their license, but that doesn't prevent them from bootlegging from Wisconsin, or a lot of times they just run to Walmart. So we do monitor that, so when I do see in the tax list that the tax isn't paid for any type of beer or alcohol that's brought by distributors, they kind of go on the do not serve list, so to speak, and then we monitor that, if any violations, and we, instead of bringing it to the council, to pull liquor license, I've been having alcohol, tobacco, and gambling, basically do a civil fine to them, and they take, they deal with all the logistics of that, so we've had a couple violations over the years, so. If they don't pay the tax, it can still be open, but they don't have, you know, the days of the, the markings in the bottles are a thing of the past, so. They could bring it in, but we usually monitor, and we see them on the do not serve list, we can usually figure out pretty quickly that, that they're bootlegging, so.
Same one every time?
Yeah.
You know what, my thought on that also, if I may, is, you know, we don't do a lot in tobacco licenses, but maybe with down the road, I don't know where the marijuana sales are going to bring us, but that might be an additional revenue source for us if we chose to go down that road.
Tobacco checks every year, we do not do alcohol checks, and that would, that's an optional thing, some cities do it, some cities don't. If that's something that we're interested in doing, we can certainly do that. Usually the liquor one, or the tobacco ones, we do it at the end of the year, it's gotten better over the years. We've very, very seldom, we have a violation, and then usually if they, if we send one of the individuals in and they figure it out, phone calls are made very quickly before we get to the next bar, and everybody knows that we're all doing checks, so it's kind of a cat and mouse game, so.
Yep. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed say nay. None motion carries five to zero. Uh, I think. Are you guys from the Rock Ridge? Okay. I'll have you come up next. There is, I, I would have had you sooner, but I was told you were going to want a picture, so I can't break free until then anyways, so. But, could you explain to council what DECA is?
Try the other one.
Yeah, so, because of a student organization of over two hundred and twenty-five thousand members nationwide, students are tested on their expertise in marketing, career areas, their poise, professionalism, and ability to handle difficult marketing, and HR situations. Competitors develop marketing proposals, advertising campaigns, and business plans. This is a great opportunity for students to learn about real-life business scenarios and help them carry it along. Even if they don't go online, we're still teaching them vital life skills. We started our chapter two years ago, and it's been a great success, we have to continue going with that. As a part of our mission this year, we want to do more community outreach, so we ended up, we like to thank you for the suggestions.
Excellent. So I do have a proclamation of the City of Gilbert. Whereas November is celebrated as National DECA Month, this commemoration is designated to recognize and honor the achievements and impact DECA has on students, and whereas DECA is a career and technical student organization that prepares future emerging leaders in marketing, finance, hospitality, and management. And whereas in conjunction with National DECA Month, it is critical to highlight Rock Ridge High School's participation in various community campaigns with the goal for members to attend the Thrive Leadership Academy and International Career Development Conference in Anaheim, California, in April of 2024. And whereas Thrive Leadership Academy is designed to provide students with skills, knowledge needed to succeed in business, world by offering and promoting courses and workshops that explore leadership, entrepreneurship, and innovation in the areas of marketing and finance and other business-building skills. And whereas through the Thrive Leadership Academy, students will gain experience using hands-on projects and activities while networking with industry leaders, fellow students from around the world. And whereas in order to qualify for Thrive Leadership Academy, Rock Ridge High School's students are required to complete several campaign tasks involving school and community outreach, among these is to promote DECA by bringing awareness to community with the issuance of a city proclamation and class photo with community leaders. Now, therefore, it is hereby proclaimed by the City of Gilbert in recognition of the importance of the development of future leaders in our local communities and throughout our nation, and the efforts of the DECA program to accomplish this important goal. Tuesday, November twenty-eighth, 2023 shall be DECA Day for Rock Ridge High School District twenty-nine oh nine, within the City of Gilbert, Minnesota, adopted by the City of Gilbert this twenty-eighth day of November, 2023. Is that what you needed?
Are all three of you going to this conference in Anaheim? Kind of convenient that Disneyland is right there. Did, did you know that? I mean, yeah, alright.
Excellent, so you need a picture with council after this? Okay, we've got one more item and then. Thank you for your patience, I just hurry up and wait.
Actually, we have three.
Three?
Two.
We can invite Paul back up.
Yeah.
Sorry, Paul.
Okay, the overland group parcel request. Apparently Dollar General, is it? Dollar General. I thought it was Dollar General.
Dollar General.
Apparently they're looking at building in tone again. And they need this parcel.
Is that the same one they were going for before?
No.
So they're going right down from Frank's on, no?
They bought that.
Right where Frank layers.
I believe, yeah.
With the pallet fence, that chunk?
Yeah.
That's where they're going to put it?
Yep.
It's a nice big area, actually.
It's right off the highway.
Yeah, but there's a parcel of land that belongs to the city right in front of it, between the road and.
It looks like a small.
Just a real sliver, yeah.
Give it to them.
It is a small sliver, but we got to have John take a look, because if you have sewer.
Water and sewer, don't we?
The water is over in front, I believe that's within the, but the sewer is kind of inside that, uh, that cell, cell, that, that corner.
But it should be a pool with, and it's, it's, because there might be a fire line or.
So we can make a motion.
The what? They're not really good, White Lakes hates them, Aurora hates them, because they just bail, they don't make any money.
It's not a designated.
Not built very well to start with.
Yeah.
Nobody likes them. But.
Whatever. That, because that's the main connection for campers getting up to the Holiday Station and side by sides and.
But that, that, that trail along the highway is not a trail. That is not, the designated trail is a trail that goes back behind the back bike path. All that traffic that ran along the highway is on private property.
It's been a trail ever since we could remember, but.
It has, but I enforced it, so it's, it's not technically a designated trail, it's been a trail that they have used, but.
So they moved the location where they used to want it now to over here.
I'm not sure where they used, because that was.
They wanted over in front of the recycling.
That was family dog.
That was both of them.
That was both. They both did.
Yeah, same plot.
So.
So they're going to want access off of thirty, or one thirty-five then, right? They're going to need to contact the highway department and everything else.
That's all on them.
Pardon?
They're just looking, they're just looking for this parcel.
Yeah, they're just looking for that parcel and.
So let me ask you guys this, have you done any homework about the long-term effects that these dollar stores have had on communities? Not many of them are positive, just, just understand that.
And the other thing is, they've, they've done it once and then they backed out, and then the other one did it and they backed out.
If you ask White Lakes or, or any of the, they're not really, uh, they're not good for the community in the long run. You think you're getting a, a business that's going to come in and provide a tax base, and they, they need a lot of things up front, and then they have their little flair, and then they kind of disappear, and you might be left with a building that's substandard, and I don't, I don't know, just.
That's what happens.
I would be a little bit hesitant about this giving a lot up front that we might not ever recoup in the long run.
So is he going to buy?
I was told to be careful, to be careful.
Just, just to exercise caution when doing this?
Yeah, you make a good point.
Yeah, but they have, there's an abandoned one, they abandoned.
Weren't they brothers?
They are brothers, they're only front grandchairs.
So anyway, I, I don't have a strong opinion, I don't have a lot of information about it, just enough to exercise caution that you're not doling out more than you're going to get back.
Don't give them too much, no, because they'll take it.
Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
I apologize. So, so my comments are these, number one, I think it's exactly right, we're going to want to make sure that any transfer that we make to them is subject to all of our utility needs, or, you know, we reserve to ourselves utilities, and says we need necessary. The second thing, based on some history, is we may want to include what's called a revert clause. So basically, we don't want to commit this, this property, and if the project doesn't go, we're kind of stuck, you know, our property's in limbo. If the project doesn't go, we want it back to the city. And that's what the revert clause would do, is indicate that if they don't develop within a certain period of time, whatever rights we grant them will revert to the city.
As long as we follow through with that.
Right.
Because every time, I don't ever see us.
So, so we don't want to sell them this property, we just want. So we don't wanna sell them this property. We just wanna create an easement on it. So we still retain ownership.
It, it depends on what their need is and what their, what sort of development they would have in conjunction with the parcel that they're looking for from the city. If they're, if they're looking at it to have parking lot over it or to develop over the top of it, they're probably not gonna be interested in accepting easement from us. They're gonna wanna hold it out. But if it's just for green space or buffer space, then an easement may be satisfactory.
Well, I mean, we can give them that often, can't we? That there would be conditions on this as far as easements, and if they don't want it at that point, they don't want it.
I think it's still a right way out to three ways and not, I don't know what that footage is, but it's part of that, it's still being that freeway railway, I think. I know it tells you those fifteen. I don't know if three ways is drawn.
Might be just off of that.
Is it new business partners this time? Is that why the change has come in? Cause last time they just up and disappeared.
He, he actually said that they have all brand new management, where it was getting them, which already falls through with previous management.
If I may for whatever, uh, as I understand it, Dollar Store, whatever the name is, they're looking to purchase Frank's tire property and this is an obstruction in front, so they wanna have, I imagine they wanna have accessibility, because if the city retains that property, that sliver that you have in front, that'll obstruct their access for business to the threat on the highway. I don't know if you know that or not, but that's the purpose of, I think that's the purpose of the request. Purchase this sliver of land so that we can develop the whole thing.
Yeah, and that's understanding. But we have infrastructure under there that we have to.
So whatever you need.
Make sure, yeah.
Some kind of like attorney's suggestion, you know, with a reversal process.
Yeah.
But that's the, that's the reason that they're, I think they're coming to the city to request purchase. That's probably the easiest way. There's other ways you can work this out, but without that, they're obstructed from highway access because that sliver belongs to the city.
Well, I don't know this covers what, who owns? Are they gonna purchase where that trailer house is now and then a lot next to it on the right side?
And all the way back.
But can't they, you know, do they need to go over our property if they own the one that's down?
I think they're down.
I, I can't tell by this picture, cause it's covered with.
Reading, I mean, it says something about the railroad. And the railroad would have gone through directly behind where that sliver of property is that the city still owns.
Trailer house is gone, Bob.
I understand that, but I'm just trying to describe the property by the old trailer house then, whatever, but. But what I'm saying is, you know, where's their access point? You know, do they have another place to access where they don't have to go across our property? That's all I'm asking.
My understanding is they want access off of thirty-five.
I, I understand that, but can they get access down farther? You know, down the hill farther. Do they also own that parcel where they could go in there? You know, I don't know. I think we should study this a little more before we sell it or whatever we're gonna do. I don't know, it's.
I think we definitely need to verify with John and Sam what we have there and what we have to protect for the city's interest.
Yeah, and, and if the state is gonna allow them an access point in a different spot, we gotta know that too. Or if it has to be right there over our property. We should find all these things out before we do anything, uh, in my view.
Let's just table it till the next council meeting then.
Yeah, and get all these questions answered.
Mayor, if I may, what I could do is respond back to him and state that the council is willing to work with you. However, there would be covenants along with any easement or purchase, you know, what's your intention? We don't know what they want. They just said, can you look into seeing what the council thinks? So I could go back and say they're willing to work with you. There's gonna be covenants, but what do you want? Are you looking to an easement? Are you looking to purchase?
Can we direct John at that same time, John and Sam, to, I guess, just confirm what we have underneath that piece of property also?
Yeah, so they have the information in the next council meeting.
Yeah, how about a diagram would be nice, you know, what their buildings consist of and parking area and everything. That would be nice to know.
They might not be that far yet.
Well, then we're not that far yet either then.
Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
One of the things that, um, one, one action the council may take is the council could direct staff to go back and discuss a, a potential development agreement. What, what a development agreement would do, it would be a convenient, from a legal vehicle standpoint, convenient place to put that uh, reverted, at least the initial language for the reverter clause. And then the other thing it would do is cover our basis under Minnesota statute to say, look, if we're gonna transfer it to you for uh, low or no compensation, we at least are gonna require that you commit to developing a certain amount of tax base within our community before we're gonna transfer the property to you. And a lot of times what we'll do is we'll reach out and say, give us, give us a conservative ballpark of what you think the value of your improvement is gonna be. And then we'll set a, a development agreement that says, uh, this property will be transferred under these conditions with these reservations for utility easements, provided you follow through with developing this development that it describes.
Would that include a picture?
A lot of times it doesn't. It doesn't necessarily have to. It depends on how far along they are.
It would be nice to know that, you know, because then you know where their access point is and everything else.
The, the previous offers we've had down here on the Gillespie site or Salo's Trucking site, they came forward, they had diagrams, they had an architectural picture and stuff.
Right, so it'd be nice if we could see that again.
Yeah.
And my understanding with Family Dollar back, they don't have much to do with the geotechnical, what they call it, more than anything, because it was going to substantially increase their costs and they just didn't wanna put that much.
Right, yeah, I do remember that.
I like the development agreement idea. Move forward with it.
Right.
Yeah, be willing to work a little more on the land if we had something.
Right.
Right.
More on paper above that, so.
So we just gotta make a motion for them to move forward with the development agreement, right?
And, and they're gonna have to check with the state. I don't know if the state is just, you can put, you know, where you want your driveway. I think there might be some restrictions on their part. I, I, they have to find all that out before they can really give us a picture of what they're gonna do.
So I'll make a motion to move forward with the development agreement. Depending what's found, I guess.
So a motion by both Councilor Paulus?
We could just start with that and have John and Sam direct.
And have Sam, Sam and John direct as well. Yes.
To do the, are you gonna request more information from them though to do the development agreement?
Yep, and, and that's, so, so directing the, so directing us as staff to go and, and work on it, we would bring a final development plan back to the city, a development agreement. You would look at it, then you could approve that agreement to actually authorize the transfer.
Yes, this is just the first step.
This is directing staff to gather their information for a development agreement.
I'd second that.
Motion by Councilor Paulus, seconded by Councilor Skinsitch for what I just said. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, say nay. Non-motion carries five zero. Uh, library donation.
A little spark board.
Moved by Councilor Skinsitch, supported by Councilor Hatesman to accept a donation of eight thousand dollars. Why am I not? Eight thousand dollars for painting the inside of the library, cleaning carpet and windows, and the donation was from the Gilbert Public Library Foundation. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, say nay. Non-motion carries five to zero. And the Magni change order for approval for payment, I'm gathering, because that's the work's been done.
So I'll make the motion to approve the paying of this change order twenty-five for Magni.
Motion by Councilor Hatesman.
Supports, sorry.
Supported by Councilor Paulus. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, say nay. Non-motion carries to approve the payment for the change order twenty-five.
What's this one? Building permit violation.
That's for discussion.
I had a few resident differences about permits and whether or not they were obtained or not, and after speaking with mayor, what we, what I would like to request is to have council direct planning and zoning to maybe look into cleaning up our wording. Um, I spoke with St. Louis County, there's, you know, changes as to how long some of the, the buildings and stuff were put on. Some of them date quite a few years back and while I don't think it's futile for us to go back ten, fifteen years, I think going forward, we need to clean up our language. Um, how long our conditional use permit's gonna be in effect? How long is a permit in effect if you start? Is it forever? As long as you keep building, it should, it should have an end date, um, the county does on theirs. Um, while our current permits only state if you don't start, it expires in a year. There's really nothing in our wording right now that states that, you know, can you build on your house and as long as you keep adding on, you can go for underneath the same twenty dollars for twenty years, so. You know, I would like the planning and zoning to maybe make some recommendations as maybe our fees high enough and violations, or, you know, if you don't get your permit, what's the penalty? I can't have, um, our police force go enforce something if I have nothing to tell them what to enforce. So that's kind of what I'm looking for is direction and maybe some input for them.
So you're looking for a motion to.
To direct planning and zoning to help us clean up. I mean, we, we just need to be consistent, so it's fair for everybody across the board. You know, everybody should be getting the same permits for the same things, but I think our language is vague and we need to clean that up. I'd like support from our planning and zoning board to help us do that.
On the, on that one about the cup conditional use permit, they said it's up to us to enforce it, the council.
However, you know, looking at, well, I understand that it's, it's a storage unit, but I think they're more common as sheds. So maybe we clean up our, our terminology is what defines a shed, what setbacks. Sam and I talked a little bit, you know, do we wanna have them certain colors, you know, earth tones, different covenants on those permits. Um, a lot of people are buying them. You can buy, you know, tractor trailers and whatnot and you could, they're eighteen hundred dollars and while we probably don't want someone to fill their parcel with it, you know, let's put some covenants against them if they have one alongside their garage or something to that effect. I mean, I'd rather see a trailer there with stuff in it than blight all over their yard. So, but the language is too vague and I think we need to clean it up.
I'll make that motion.
What's the motion?
For Jill to direct, uh, planning and zoning.
To look into the language.
Language of the permit policy.
So if we're even gonna allow them in town? Cause this one just had a cup. It was just conditional for one year only. You know, and it expired a couple of years ago, yeah.
Right.
And it's hard for us, we're all, you know, we weren't here then, you know, we go back and try and enforce now, so I think it's just, let's move forward, let's clean up our language, just put some, you know, definitive dates, times, or how long they're gonna be, so if I, if I go and force them, I think we'll just.
So what do you do about this one though?
Well, that's where we need to define what defines a shed, I think, first of all.
No, it's, it's, they gave them one year only.
I don't know if we can go back after sort of a long time, but I mean, there's statute limitations and different things to that effect that we have to take into effect.
Yeah, and I think moving forward, it's a letter saying that it's, send them the contract and say that you're expired by two years.
Yeah.
You either reapply if that's what council wishes, or you have to remove it.
I know, I.
Attorney Lindsay, is there a statute limitation that if we have a conditional use permit, we didn't force them, it's five years ago, I mean, we really have to stay on you?
We, we may, um, statuteation, I, I don't have the, the statuteation enforcement zoning work on top of my head. But, but general, the, the most standard statuteation is six years. So I can pull that information and see if we're still within time. So in, in that respect, there's a couple of different standards or legal theories that could apply. So there could be some prescriptive rights that may have attached or, but I'll look at.
So the motion was to direct.
Jill.
Jill to contact, uh, planning and zoning to ask them to revise the current language to clarify.
Containers.
Containers and sheds.
And you need to just, our permit length, it's kind of our language and give us some recommendations.
Look at it and come back to us with it.
What do you mean in sheds?
Sheds, well, that storage container would be used as a shed, but a shed, uh, just language clarifying. Because if I bought a, a container like that, would I call it a shed after I stored my stuff, probably?
I know you can get the, the plastic ones, the snap together ones from Menards and Depple. And that's terribly different than those. It's just.
The difference of buying ten of those ten by tens and lining them up to one of those twenty-foot sheds, what's the difference? And we, you know, allow one or the other and, and there's a lot of variables in there that I think.
And I did speak with St. Louis County, the, the metal containers like you would get off of a semi or a boat, they do assess them as a shed. So I did clarify that with the county. It's a hundred dollars, but she said they are because they're, once people are putting them down there, they're really permanent. She said they're not moving them, but then we gotta decide, you know, where are we allowing and what are the setbacks? How many can you have? I think that language should just, you know, is it gonna be included or not? That's just, what's our recommendations?
Yeah, and I think with, once we get it from planning and zoning, then council can decide what off their recommendations. I mean.
Right.
What they think of it, I guess.
Yeah.
So moved by Councilor Paulus. You supported, couns, supported by Councilor Skinsitch. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, say nay. Non-motion carries five to zero.
So how about the other one then?
The other one? For long and winding road for the pole barn?
Yeah, the, the tax haven state pole barn is put in, I think, eighty-seven.
That is nineteen ninety-seven. Yeah. Through twenty-six years?
I think it's hardly about that far, I mean.
Is.
He does have a permit, his twenty nineteen permit is very fairly linked, and the additions he's putting on are continually to help with all attached. Our permits, permits don't define once you serve how long they are. They just say you have to serve. That's where we're really looking to clean up. You know, if, if you don't serve, you're gonna break it, but if you serve, there's no end date, we don't break it, so I think that language needs to be added if that's what we want, or at least clean up.
So can I add that as a supplement to Joe's?
I'm just curious though.
You don't start with the shed and end up with a Taj Mahal?
Well, that's what it's, that's, that's what I hear. It's becoming, it's becoming not even a residential area. It's more commercial now. From my understanding. So what, what do we do about this?
It's still pretty, we still have pictures from twenty twenty-two, if anyone wants to see them.
Yeah.
Right, from. I mean, it's, it's getting, uh, beyond the residents, put it that way.
Isn't that part of the motion that we just made? Right.
To clear, yeah, but that was specific to the sheds.
That was, yeah.
This would need to be for our permitting, and I know we had a discussion on this. We talked about it with, like, our charter, because we were looking at increasing the fees and stuff, but charter doesn't do that. Council can do it, so.
The height of the building is getting up there too, there's, you know, there's a lot of issues that that property has that hasn't really been looked at by anyone on planning and zoning that I know of.
What is the height restriction on a home? Is there one?
Well, there was the one.
What's two stories?
On Leonie's garage, there was one. I don't know about.
On a garage, it's fourteen feet to the peak.
Yeah.
I don't know what it is on the house.
I don't know either. That I don't know. So you have to ask the planning and zoning, uh, board to look into permit requirements and, and just clean those up a little bit?
Yeah.
Pretty much the language for duration. Once started, is there an end game or?
And, and what's gonna be the use of this property? I mean, is it gonna be a commercial property in the end?
Do we have anything on solar farms or anything?
Yeah, that's another issue. It's got a solar.
No, and actually Stan said he just got another call on someone looking into solar, so we, we still need to address that. We've gotten all this, we'll be the fourth or fifth property, tell them that wants to do it.
But this one already went ahead with it, I understand. There's already a solar farm up there.
Yeah.
So we're way behind catching up with this property.
And another thing that could be addressed or needs, will be needing to get, be addressed is the security cameras. We have, you know, residents right on Main Street that's got really obtrusive security cameras, you know, that have the ability to look detailed into everybody's everything.
Oh, really?
Where do we draw that line? How do we draw that line? You ever seen that?
Well, yeah, I heard there's one down.
Oh, yeah, just drive it down Main Street. You can't miss it. It's a thirty-foot pole.
Oh, that was.
Friggin casino ball on top.
And because that's a Thai question.
Well, that was looked into.
Yes, the problem is generally because we have nothing in the ordinance, the property line basically goes infinity, right? It's straight up, so there's nothing in the ordinance that it'll allow you to have a hundred-foot tower with a ton of.
Yeah, but wasn't there a signage ordinance? You can only have signs so high. Wouldn't that be covering that also?
No.
When those orders came out, there weren't even such things as, uh, security cameras for owners. So it's, it's, it's so antiquated. And, uh, this is quite the system. I mean, it's, it's, uh, you can see a lot of them, like, the seat arc cameras. It's probably the additional licenses you've got to do, it's, it's higher than what our cameras.
He took it down, but then he put it back up.
No, it fell down. He put it back up.
Did it fall down? Oh, dang.
So I think, you know, planning and zoning, you know, rates, fees, duration, expiration dates, those are still a plethora of things I think that we need to just clean up. At least we're moving forward.
It's a good thing that Ty's gonna volunteer to sit on that board. Address some of these things. So do I need to, uh, amend, uh, or make another motion or amend?
I think I just make another motion because I think it is.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we recommend to the planning and zoning board to address the language, the duration, the height specifics of residential buildings. And if, you know, if you apply for a residential permit, you can't morph it into a commercial permit somewhere down the way.
It's for what the permit states it is.
Yeah, that's right.
There you go.
It's not a permit to just, it's not an open-ended.
There you go.
That language needs to be addressed.
I'll support.
Moved by Councillor Hitzman, supported by Councillor Polis with what Councillor Hitzman just stated.
Prattle, yeah.
They're, they're gonna have issue with this. I, I, I just attended a couple of meetings there and they're, they're really, they're gonna kind of push it off on the council. I, I just know from just dealing with them in the past.
We're gonna get it right back.
Uh, we can try and, so to direct Clerk Zollard to ask planning and zoning very nicely if they will look into the language that we currently have for any update or correction. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. Non-motion carries five zero.
They're gonna do anything with this guy?
Nope, he never showed up. So.
Support.
Moved by Councillor Hitzman, supported by Councillor Polis to adjourn our city council meeting at eight twenty-three P M. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. Non-motion carries five to zero. Meeting adjourned.